Actually, I think we'll just go ahead and start. We'll go ahead and start anyway. If I get your attention, it's 5:30, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order for November. And the first item up is pledge of allegiance, and I believe Ms. Pete's going to lead us in that.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have our mission statement, and Matt Hodges is gonna read that for us.
Alright, sir. The mission of the Beaufort County Schools team is to enhance the quality of life in our community by nurturing all students, by educating them to their fullest potential.
Okay, thank you. And we have public comments? No public comments? Okay. So we'll move to the approval of the agenda. If everybody wants to pull that up on their computer, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. And nothing need to be added or noted. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. And approval of the board minutes. And we have a couple of items there for the November the 9th meeting. If you have a chance, I guess, to look over that as well.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. There's no questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved. Tonight, we're going to have our recognition, public recognition, led by Ms. Elfa Booth. She's going to be in that for us, as well as, I guess, the color. So, they're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of November was citizenship. The nominees at the elementary level were from Bath Elementary Bryce Thomas, from Chaco Community Middle Tayshaun Purdue, from Chaco Community Primary Ashlyn Beaman, from Eastern Elementary Makaya McGill, from John Cotton Taylor Anderson Duncan, from John Small Damian Huey, from Northeast Elementary Kishan Spencer, and from SW Snowden there were two Jakari Lanier and Harmony Gaynor. And the winner at the elementary level was Damian Huey from John Small. If he will come forward. Damian is a 4th grader at John Small. His parents are Damian Huey Senior and Aretha Cobb. They will stand.
Yeah.
And he was presented by Ms. Holly Patrick, his teacher. She will stand as well. And Ms. Patrick wrote, "Damian Huey is a 4th grade student at John Small Elementary. I will never forget the day his mother came to open house. She walked in and smiled, but at the same time, you could see the nervousness on her face. She looked at me and said, 'Damian takes awhile to warm up to a new classroom. He had a hard time last year. For the first week of school, he was standoffish from me, didn't talk to the other children, and wanted nothing to do with school. I was nervous about him as well. How was I going to get him to open up? I had to make him feel like he was a part of the classroom. Well, it only took three or four days. Damian was a new student. He was a citizen in the classroom. When I saw this month's character trait was citizenship, I knew he was the child to pick. To me, citizenship means honesty, compassion, respect, responsibility, and courage. Since that day, he has been a child that exhibits amazing citizenship. The beginning of this month, Damian came to me and said, 'You know what, Ms. Patrick? I hate school, but I do well, so you will be happy.' I couldn't believe my ears. His compassion for me was overwhelming. He knew it was so important to me for him to work hard, so he did it. And boy, did he work hard. Every morning, as soon as he sees me, he comes toward me with arms wide open for a big hug and his normal good morning, or love you, mean it. He finally opened his heart and felt compassion for myself and the other students in the room. When he sees another student with no one to work with during stations, he always goes over and works with them. That way, they are not alone. He also became responsible. He has his homework, and every day, he comes to school ready to learn. He even signed up for after-school, so he could get help with his homework. He is someone I can depend on in the classroom to be ready to learn and work hard for the day. He is also honest. He is honest when he does something wrong, and he is honest about when he does not understand something in class. He will come to me and say, 'I don't get it.' Then, after I show it to him, there he goes back on the ball again, working hard and figuring it out. Respect is also something I see in Damian each day. He always answers with yes ma'am or no ma'am, not only to me, but also every other adult in the school. Overall, though, of the traits I listed earlier, I would have to say, the word that describes Damian the best is courage. He is one of the most courageous students that I have ever met. He just decided one day that what kind of student he wanted to be, and he is doing it. He is fulfilling his dream and using his courage to become the person he truly wants to be. He had to find the courage to give me a chance to show him what school could be like: happiness, learning, love, and kindness. He also had to find the courage to say, 'I'm not going to give up, no matter how hard it is.' During our benchmark just last week, I heard him whisper to himself, 'This is too hard for me.' I could see the despair in his eyes and the fear that he could not pass this benchmark. I bent down beside him and said, 'You can do it, don't give up.' He sat there for a minute, and I also feared that he was going to give up. I couldn't bear to watch. When I looked back over, I saw him take a huge breath and whisper to himself, 'I can do it.' He picked up his pencil and started working again, only this time, he wasn't huffing and puffing or putting his pencil down when he got through, when it got tough. He stood steadfast and worked each problem, checked each problem, and when he wasn't 100% sure what to do, he improvised. He amazed me that day, and what amazed me even more was his score. He has scored the highest grade on the benchmark. All I could do was smile. His courage pushed him to give it all he got, and he succeeded. In closing, without Damian in my classroom, I would lose a piece of the citizenship in my classroom that shows the other students, 'You can do it. You can succeed, and you can change.' His love, compassion, honesty, respect, responsibility, and most of all, his courage to show the other students that anything is possible. We say congratulations to Damian.
On the behalf of the Beaufort County Board of Education, we too say congratulations to you. We are just so honored to present this certificate to you for showing such great citizenship and representing your class. We want you to continue to do that, okay? Can you say you're gonna do that? Thank you, Damian. Now, what we want you to do is to go around and meet, greet the board, okay?
You shake their hand.
And shake their hands, and you're gonna have this little, sit up here, and you just put this in your house, anywhere you want. And then, we're gonna meet you, I'm gonna meet you over here at the little green wagon, and we have another surprise for you, okay?
Come on.
First of all, the board.
Congratulations. And you know that sweatshirt you have on, they'd be happy to have you one day.
Yeah, AC.
Yes, he is, Matt.
Hey, Matt.
He is a pirate.
They're on, it's starting.
I'm on it, Matt, in that one.
They're on, it's starting.
It's cold out there.
They will be happy to have it.
Especially when they're up for awards.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from the Early College High School Tabitha Gardner, from Chaco Community Middle Tristan Akey, from Northeast Elementary Demia Moore, from PS Jones David Perry, and from SW Snowden Samia Wahib. And the winner at the middle school was Tristan Akey from Chaco Community Middle. She will come forward. He will come forward. Tristan is a 6th grader at Chaco Community Middle School, and his mom is Ms. Nicole Houston. If she will stand. And he was presented by his teacher, Ms. Amanda Stone. If she's here, she will stand as well. And Ms. Stone wrote, "I'm nominating Tristan Akey for the character education trait of citizenship. Tristan is an example of a true citizen because he is actively involved in serving his community by volunteering daily at a local animal shelter in our area. Every day after school, Tristan and some of his family members head to an animal shelter called Out of the Woods. Tristan serves there after school on a voluntary basis, in the afternoon performing such tasks as cleaning up after the animals, feeding them, and spending time with them. I believe this is a noble and admirable way to spend your time, especially for a 6th grader like Tristan. Citizenship is defined as honoring and contributing to the laws, policy, and human rights of the land, and being committed to active involvement in your community. While Tristan may be more interested in animal rights and treating them with respect, he is certainly a model of active community involvement and a true example of one of our future good citizens. We say congratulations to Tristan."
Tristan, I know you heard what I said to Damian a few minutes ago. But we feel the same for you. The board is just excited to know that we can present this certificate to you for the citizenship that you've shown, and how you represent your class also. So what we want you to do is go around and greet the board, and give them a handshake, and we're gonna meet you over at the little green wagon, Matt.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. It looks so nice.
Gardner, at the EdTech Center Jordan Schmidt, at Northside High School Taekeem Crandall, at Washington High School Tremont Pope, and at Southside High School Keegan Wiggins. And the winner was from Southside High School Keegan Wiggins. If he will come forward. He will come forward. Keegan is a 12th grader at Southside High School. Her parents are Jeffrey and Tricia Wiggins. If they will stand. And she was presented by her teacher, Ms. Victoria Hamill. If she will stand. Ms. Hamill wrote, "Citizenship nomination, November 2015. The Merriam-Webster dictionary defines citizenship as the qualities that a person is expected to have as a responsible member of a community. A student that personifies this is Keegan Wiggins. Keegan is involved in Key Club, Friends of Rachel, and Science Club, serves as Vice President of the Math Club, Secretary of Beta Club, and is President of the Global Issues Club at Southside. She is also active in the community. Keegan works as a referee for the Washington Optimists recreational soccer program, when she is not leading as the captain of Southside High School soccer team or participating in indoor soccer during the offseason for the track team. As a member of the Southside High School track team, she competes in the 4x8, the 1-mile, and the 2-mile events. Over the summer, she volunteered at Vited Medical Center in Washington as well. To be an involved, contributing member of so many groups and organizations, as well as volunteering and working in her surrounding community, exhibits the qualities of a person with good citizenship. Margaret Mead is quoted as saying, 'Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has.' Keegan will be a strong leader for change in the future in whatever community she chooses to reside. We say congratulations to Keegan."
You wanna say congratulations to you also, on the behalf of the Beaufort County Board of Education. And I know, seeing you're a very, very, very busy young lady, which shows very good citizenship. And we do appreciate what you do. But what we want you to do right now is to greet the Beaufort County Board of Education, give them a handshake, and make them also say thank you. And you're gonna meet over here at the little wagon.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you here, Keegan. Good job.
Okay, we're gonna have all of you come back, and for our picture, Damian, you can...
I'll be either way, then I'll paint some hat.
Sir, just a minute. Can we get the certificates for you?
Sure.
Okay. Please just...
I have none.
All right, I look forward. Okay, handsome. Team picture.
This time, we'd like to recognize the Clean School Award winner for the month of November. And I'm gonna ask Carlton Robertson, Head Custodian, Kaderick Daly, and Serena Gibbs, custodial staff from Chaco Community Middle School, to come forward. They had a perfect score of 100%.
Ah, okay. Okay, we're gonna all, we can trust you if you have good money. We'd just like to give you this and say thank you for the hard work that you do over at that Chaco Community Middle School. And I know that it's good, and I know that our board, when we're here, but we definitely appreciate what you do over at school, to make that 100%. All right, so we're gonna... But that's all right. We'll fix that. You asked to hold this? Carlton? Carlton, you can play Carlton, David, and you are... Serena? Okay. And... Oh, that's you. All right, me and you. Certificate.
Give them a great board and to get a picture. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all leave Carlton back working and not fit. Hey, Miss Gibbs. Tell me can't get any money, don't come over here now. Congratulations.
That's right.
If you ride, I'm gonna get cleaned up.
Okay, just a little Mr. Dennis, I can see you, but this time.
And we had three schools at 99%, Southside High School, Northside High School, and Chaco Community Primary School. At 97%, PS Jones Middle School, John Small Elementary School, Bath Elementary, Washington High School, and the EdTech Center. Northeast Elementary at 96%, and Eastern Elementary at 95%. Let's give them a round of applause. Next, we'd like to recognize the Washington High School men's soccer team. We've got quite a few of them here. Before they come up, I wanna share something with you. This is an email that came from one of the coaches that the team played in the playoffs, and just want to share this with you, because it conveys, I think, what everyone who knows these young men feel about their play on the field. It says, "Hey, Coach, congrats on the win, and good luck Saturday. Bring it back home to the East. I do want to say something about your kids. They are some really good kids from what I saw. Your goalie was outstanding, but several times, I saw him display great sportsmanship. He is someone you can be proud of. When your fans charge the field after the game, I got a little worried, because there is always that one who goes too far, but your kids and their fans were completely respectful. I saw several fans trying to console or congratulate our guys. I've never seen that before. I don't know what you guys are doing up there, but keep doing it, because it's working. You and your community should be very proud of the kids you're producing. And to the team, we are very proud of you. They represented Beaufort County well." I'd like to present Coach Kosik and Rodriguez, and the state runner-up for the 2A Soccer Championships. And we'd like to have you all come through, greet the board, and want to get a quick picture of you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We're proud of you.
Outstanding job, guys. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Congratulations. Outstanding, guys.
Congratulations.
All right, there you go. Congrats, guys. Excellent job. Congratulations, guys.
Y'all gonna have to move up just a little, so other ones can get around here.
I think I gotta go two or three deep.
I think so. Good job. Congratulations. Well-represented. Good job.
Very pleased.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you for representing Washington so well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they are. Handsome.
All right.
Yeah, we can sit down.
What's the next?
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Whatever it is, when they get needed again.
there at the soccer match on Saturday. We had a great turnout representing Washington High School, and I'm just proud to be there as part of that group. Again, congratulations. Our final recognition tonight is to our board. And this, I want to share something with you. On October the 17th, 2015, the Beaufort County Board of Education received the Grand Prize Award for Excellence in Educational Programs at the Annual Conference of the North Carolina School Boards Association. The board received this award for Operation Graduation. This is our multi-year effort that has reduced the annual dropout rate by more than 50% and has continually increased the four-year graduation rate to an all-time high of 84.3% in 2015. The board attributes these positive changes to the array of educational choices currently available to high school students, including the Beaufort County Early College High School Pathways Dropout Prevention and Recovery Program, Career and College Promise, NC iris College Access Program, and Career Academies. Through partnership with business, industry, and nonprofit organizations, leveraging available resources and investing in programs that yield results, the board has built a foundation of lasting change. Future progress will be achieved through continued collaborative efforts that enable all Beaufort County students to graduate from high school prepared for college, careers, and life. And the picture that we've got displayed here is our chairman, Mr. Terry Williams, receiving the plaque, which I have right here in front of me. But let's give the board a round of applause for their courage. Thank you.
And can I say one thing real quick? I will say that I've had one principal already call me and say that actually, they consider it their award, because they're the ones that make us shine. And actually, they're right. They're the ones do the hard work, the schools. And I'm actually very proud that that's the way it works. That's the way it's supposed to work. It's not us, it's the schools, the staff, and the kids. And that's the way it should always be. And I'm not gonna let you take cameras anymore with you. Is that it for the recognition? Now's the time when we generally move into our regular business. You're welcome to stay, but we will take about a minute to let you decide if that's what you want to do or not, because I know you came for the recognition, probably. Yep, this is when we usually clear the room out. We just can't get them to stay. One of these weeks, some months, I'm not gonna say that, and just see how long it takes them to figure out they leave. I doubt it would be very long. I doubt it'd be very long. Butch didn't give you that one up. My daughter said, "Have y'all seen that?" And she said, "Well, yeah, I know you have, because it's on Instagram or somewhere." So she, you put it on there, I believe.
Yeah, I put it on Instagram.
Is that so? We with a new policy. The handle for, that's what we got with the school. We got a limit board member. Y'all, I'm proud of you, Terry. Well, Lisa, somebody said that I didn't smile, but I didn't smile.
And we thought they were all here to get you.
So it's your fault. I think everybody's left, it's gonna leave. Nope, that camera's running. But you can do it a two-minute warning. Who's doing this?
The red one. Both of them. We got stuff to throw at you when we're ready for you to quit. We got stuff to throw at you when we're ready for you to quit. That's the first thing we throw. That's the first thing we throw.
You saw, can't even pick it up without dropping it. Is there any?
He's leaving, man.
He's leaving, probably. Okay, now we're gonna move into our no-action part of the meeting, and our first presentation is a presentation from Higher Heights, and I believe Ms. Johnson and Ebison, Ms. Ebison's gonna do that, or whichever they choose to do.
Good afternoon. My name is Loretta Ebison, and I am the Executive Director and Founder of Higher Heights Human Services. We are a nonprofit organization. I'm servicing pregnant and parenting teens of Beaufort County. And if the board remembers that... And if the board remembers, I came last year and talked about our funding crisis that we were in. We were in a fifty thousand dollar deficit because we did not receive those APP/CNC funds. Over the summer, we were able to do substantial fundraising and go and beg our local commissioners for money, and they granted us with about twenty thousand dollars, and they helped us to save the program. With that being in place, we were able to implement the Higher Heights Healthy Outcomes Program at the Beaufort County Ed Tech Center. The program has been very successful thus far. If I can get to the slide. The program's been very successful thus far. We were able to hire our program coordinator, Ms. Johnson here, Janae Johnson, who's a social worker, to work the program. So she's housed at the Ed Tech program. So last year, when I came to you, this is what it looked like. This is what was our expenses, and this is the money we had. And then we did some, as I said, some substantial fundraising, and we were able to raise about forty-seven thousand dollars in order to keep this program intact. To date, we have served twenty pregnant and parenting teens. So we have ten at Washington High School, six at Ed Tech, three at Southside, and one at Northside. And that's just a chart that Ms. Johnson prepared for you, just to show you the growth of the program. So the program is definitely growing, is definitely keeping us on our toes. To date, we have done four home visits. We have done group at Washington High School and two groups at Southside. One of the big things this year that we implemented is that we wanted to do group at every school. Every school that had a pregnant and parenting teen, we wanted to provide group services to them. So we are working on implementing that model. We have done one hundred, over one hundred one-on-one visits. Ms. Johnson is at Washington High School at least three or four days a week. Her phone is constantly ringing. It is a busy, busy program. We have done completely about four service coordinations, and that's the calls we make to Ms. Howard at Student Services or Mr. Singleton in order to arrange home bounds and other things like that. We have provided transportation. We had students who was in transportation crisis and could not get to school, and we provided transportation in order for that student to remain in school. We also had ten emergency services, meaning food, meaning diapers, and things like that. So we do have accountability. Our program accountability is in place. We have frequent visits from the program supervisor that would be me, so at Ms. Johnson's desk a lot, just to make sure the program is running appropriately. We have bi-annual evaluations. We have monthly board reports. We report to our Board of Directors about the progress of the program, and we do that on a monthly basis. We also are in constant contact with Dr. Fitton, giving him a monthly report as far as how the program is functioning and how it's operating, as well as the upcoming needs. And then we quarterly report to you guys, and that's why we're here today. So just to talk a little bit about sustainability and funding, we did aggressive grant writing like we do every year. We petitioned APP/CNC for funding. We petitioned them for seventy-five thousand dollars that would fund the program for four years. Michelle and Oris and I wrote that grant. We spent about fifty to sixty hours writing the grant, and we were not awarded the grant. So we were very disappointed about that. So what I'm trying to explain to you is that we're in the same funding situation that we were in last year. We're still gonna be in a budget shortfall. We also have petitioned Potash for twenty-five thousand dollars, but we have no response from Potash yet. We do have a fundraiser planned for the spring, but we don't have a whole lot of details to tell you about that right now. We have a pickpicking, and that's our annual fundraiser. We're gonna continue to do aggressive grant writing. We have a Project One Thousand One Hundred where we go to local churches and ask them to present us with a hundred dollars annually to feed into our program, and then we go back the following year and just give them an update. Well, I can tell you that program and that project failed miserably last year. The churches was willing the first year to let us in, but previous sources that they have not let us in, and we've, you know, we've been fighting to get in there, but it's just been very difficult. And we also have a summer festival. Now, keep in mind that we do have these fundraisers, and last year, we, all the money that we had, we dedicated totally a hundred percent to this program. And this year, we're not gonna be able to do that. We can put a portion to our program, but we can't put a hundred percent of the funding to the Higher Heights program, the Healthy Outcomes program, because we have other programs that also need attention. So I'm done. I just wanted to let you know, we still partner, of course, with Beaufort County Good Schools. We thank you so much for your partnership. Without your partnership, we will never be able to run this program. We thank Mr. Jackson over at Ed Tech, who's just been so welcoming to us. We thank you all for your support. We continue to work with Young Lives and Coastal Pregnancy Centers. You know, we talked about the differences with the services last time. The Coastal Pregnancy Center is more of a faith-faith organization. Young Lives provides mentoring, and obviously, we are an educational program. We provide educational services. Just to give you a few stats, last year, we had no repeat pregnancies, and all of our girls who were eligible for graduation graduated. This year, currently, we have no repeat pregnancy. We are working on attendance, especially at Ed Tech. We are definitely working on that, but overall, we think the program is really going good and really going successfully the way we had hoped that it would go. But I just wanted to let the board know that we, again, are in a financial crisis, and we're gonna do everything we can to keep this program afloat, but we may be coming to you, asking you for assistance. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Ebson?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
What seemed to be the resistance from the churches that you're returning to?
I think, in general, our churches are going through crisis. You know, I think we have a couple pastors that are sick.
Financial situation.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, a lot of churches are going through transitions. Not they don't, not that they don't support what we do. I really believe they support what we do, but we just have not been able to get in and ask this year.
They certainly support the Coastal Pregnancy Centers.
Yes, and we do get a small monthly donation from Harvest Church, but we have, and we do get First Presbyterian Church. But me being able to go in and speak and give them an update and ask for funding, again, it's been very difficult this year to do that.
Ms. Ebson, when you, when you appear for the county commissioners, and I know they gave you some funding, did it give you any, any hope that that'll be recurring or one time?
No, that was actually emergency funding, because I went after the fact, because I had to get enough nerve to go. And so they, that's not reoccurring funding, but we are gonna petition them to put us in their budget, and that's gonna be happening very soon. So hopefully, that twenty thousand dollars that they gave us, we'll be able to get every year. And if it's earmarked, obviously, it'll go to directly, all of it will go towards a Healthy Outcomes program.
I have a question, but I do want to make a statement that I thank you and I support Loretta in all her endeavors to make this program sustainable on its own, and I hope, my fondest hope is that that will happen for you soon, but how important the program is, you know, to our pregnant teens and that they're continuing in school. We all know the alternative would be they would drop out, and that's not what we want for any of our teens, but thank you for your hard work.
And just to add to that, thank you so much. Thank you for your support. But just to add to that, we do have a partnership in agreement with Beaufort High Partnership for Children, and they have written thirty thousand dollars in their budget for our girls. So as long as our girls attend school, they get free daycare. And that's something that's unheard of in other counties. They would have to find daycare resources for themselves. So we are blessed to have such a supportive county and blessed that the partnership, you know, writes us in our budget, and as long as our girls go to school, they receive a letter from us and they get free childcare. So we're doing our best to keep them in school. Again, our program is an educational program, is designed to keep girls in school, and is designed to prevent secondary pregnancies, because we understand with one child, it's gonna be difficult, with two, it's gonna be almost impossible to complete a college education. So thank you.
So most of your girls are one-time pregnant?
All of our girls are first-time pregnancies or has already had a baby who was maybe in the tenth grade and maybe they're in eleventh grade this year. We don't have any repeat pregnancies. And it's because of the education. It's because we talk about prevention the day of, the day we meet them. We talk about it, we plant that, because we want them to succeed.
We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And I know it's not easy.
Not easy, but it's worth it.
That's right.
Thank you so much, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you for coming. You would just sit right there? Okay, that carries us into, you're gonna run, okay. That carries us to the school improvement plan presentations, and obviously, Ms. Pike is first up. And apparently, you're on a clock over here I didn't know about, so.
Yes, I'm gonna jump right in with our strengths and our accomplishments this year. We have ninety-three percent of our students are projected to graduate with a two-year degree or a certificate this year. And this is huge compared to years, previous years. It's a thirty percent to forty percent increase. So we are very excited about that. We have the largest graduating class in May since the school opened, and our program is also expanding. We renewed the MOU with the Community College, and they have increased the total enrollment from two fifty to three hundred. Last year, we had a hundred and fifty applicants. So this is the, this is the most applicants we've ever received at the early college, and I'm very excited about that. We just finished the eighth-grade tours at the Community College two weeks ago, and I'm already receiving phone calls from parents asking for the application, and that's the earliest I've ever received calls, so. And our NC report card, we showed improvement in every EOC area compared to the year before. Also, our graduation rate increased from ninety-one percent to a hundred percent. We were just recognized earlier this month in Durham for the hundred percent graduation rate. So we're very, very proud of our students and the hard work from our faculty. Our achievement increased from an eighty-eight to a ninety-seven overall, and our school performance went from an eighty-eight as the numerical grade to a ninety-three. We've identified several areas of growth. Of course, you know, it's our goal, you know, our whole program is set up for the students to receive an associate's degree. So it's our goal that ninety-five to a hundred percent of our students will graduate, not only with their high school diploma, but also their associate's degree or a certificate. And we are almost there, and we'll continue to work towards that goal, and to increase the number of students earning a C or better in high school and college courses. And the reason why we want the students to at least earn a C is because those courses will transfer to a four-year university, has to be at least a C or better. So we have three goals this year. The first one was added once the year started, but we applied for innovation and excellence recognition with new schools. And we just went through a site visit earlier this month where two individuals visited the school, observed teachers, they met with parents and students and faculty members, and they're supposed to let us know, they assessed the school, they gave us positive feedback, but they're supposed to let us know in January if we're actually gonna receive the recognition. And if we do receive it, we will become a visitation site for other educators in the state. They will come and, they will come to our school, pick up on some programs, teaching strategies that we use to hopefully implement in their schools. Our second goal is to increase collaboration among teachers by implementing monthly, this PLC meetings, which stands for Professional Learning Communities. And all the teachers meet all together at least once a month and discuss different ways to improve student achievement. And as a result of the meetings, we've started a school-wide literacy challenge where every content area implements at least one literacy strategy, whether it's, you know, summarizing text, being familiar with content vocabulary and pulling that out of a text, because reading comprehension is so important for the high school students and at the next level at the college setting. We also started a reading program with our ninth and tenth grade students. And in elementary school, you, you, the teachers assess the students' reading level or their Lexile levels, and you see this continued sometimes through middle school as well, but once the students start high school, there's really not a focus anymore about, you know, where are they on their, you know, the Lexile level? Where do they fall? And so we decided to continue that, and all of our students took a pre-assessment in the ninth and tenth grade. We ran it through the English classes. And we have an idea now of how the students, you know, their reading level, and surprisingly, we have some that, you know, are at the fifth grade reading level, and some are all the way up at, you know, twelfth grade. So there's a wide variety. So this support is needed for the students, and they, they read several passages every week, take assessments, and hopefully, by the end of the year, we can see the progress and an increase in the, in the Lexile level. And also, sharing best practices and resources was another goal of the PLC meetings. Goal three is ninety percent of our students earn at least a C in college classes. Again, this is, this is hoping that students will have that transferable credit. So we started two high school classes, one graduate success class, and this is for all thirteenth graders, and then a college readiness class for twelfth graders. And these students meet with the college liaison, the school counselor, to discuss, you know, their college courses and also help them transition to the post-secondary section and apply for colleges. Academic reports is another thing that we're implementing with the college courses. We do not get any feedback until once we receive the final grade. So to get the early intervention that we need so we can possibly assist the students, the academic reports are filled out by the instructors, and they're brought back to the college liaison, and we discuss where the student is and offer any support if we need it. So these are our goals, and that concludes my presentation. I think I'm at the time limit. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Great numbers? Yeah, I mean, I don't know what to say. Just a great job.
It's hard, it's hard to keep climbing when you're at the top.
It is, it is, but we are, we are so excited with the ninety-three. This previous years, we were just hitting it maybe sixty-one, sixty-five percent, so.
Congratulations.
Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. All right. Some strengths that we have, we increased enrollment in our AP classes from twenty-seven to fifty-three in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Our college credits, two thousand twelve, ten students. Two years ago, ninety-one students, and now, this past year, a hundred and twenty students took a total of two hundred and seventeen classes. The class of two thousand fifteen, fifty-three out of a hundred and eight students have earned at least one college credit. Thirty-three have earned five or more credit hours, and thirty-two tenth graders currently enrolled. Those numbers have changed. There's eighty-eight juniors out of, eighty-eight juniors have or currently enrolled in three hundred and nineteen total classes. Fifty-six seniors out of ninety-seven have earned at least one college credit, and eighty-two students in the sophomore class are currently enrolled in a college class. Some strengths, graduation rate for two thousand fourteen was eighty-six point six. Graduation rate for two thousand fifteen was eighty-six point seven. So we did have an increase, and the state average is eighty-five point six, which, so we're higher than the state average. We had six dropouts this past year, which is tied for the last year and is lowest in the last ten years. Our college credit and AP courses, state average is thirteen point seven percent, but at Northside High, thirty-one point six percent. Some of the challenges that we face, we're continuing to have a dramatic increase in college, enrollment in college classes for all of our students. And again, that line is incorrect, so we have addressed that issue. So what we're having issues with now is students that are either, we're having overcrowded classrooms for the college classes, we're having technology because lacks of, lack of computers for our students. We also have a lack of facilitators, and we also have a lack of funding, which is, our Iris Grant, as y'all probably already know, has run out or is running out at the end of this year. And so approximately three hundred students at Northside are taking a college class this year, all the way, you know, out of four hundred and fifty-five students, which is a huge deal. So how we're going to address that need in the future, because I don't want these kids to have to lose that opportunity, because that opportunity's been great for those students. And I don't, I want to be able to continue to provide that opportunity, not just through Beaufort County Community College, but through ECU and UNCG, our students are able to take those classes throughout those avenues. So we continue to improve our ACT scores. Our ACT score results were fifty-one percent of our students, fifty-one percent of our senior class this year met the minimum score, which was highest in the district. Eighty-one point four percent of our ACT Work Keys Assessment students achieved silver, gold, or platinum. That's fifty-nine of the current senior class, I'm sorry, last year's senior class, eighty-one point four percent. So fifty-nine of those students achieved a platinum, silver, or gold certificate on the Work Keys exam, which is an exam that's required by many employers, local employers, Grady White Boats. Grady White Boats, Potash, NACO, any kind of employment like that. Those students are required to have those certificates before they're even eligible to apply in some cases, much less get a job. So we're sending them out not only to the colleges, but we're also sending them out to the workforce if that's what they choose. Two of the biggest successes that we've had this year is changing our guidance councils over to where they're moving up with the students. So they'll know the students for four years. That's been a huge impact for our students so far. And providing the advisor, advisee period with their homeroom teacher who also moves up with them for four years. So those two things have made a huge impact. Any questions? I apologize for the mix-up on the presentation.
Sounds like you're on the right track, that's for sure.
The homeroom teacher goes?
Goes up with the student. Yep. So for four years, this year's freshman homeroom teachers will move up with the students. So they'll have them for four years. And, and that's who they meet with for the advisor, advisee period. And we, we've had two advisor, advisee periods so far. And one was about what the grad project is, how to, you know, how that's working, what they're, how they're progressing towards that. And then the next one was about, okay, what do you want to do career-wise? And what can we help to get you there? And now the guidance councils are compiling all the careers that the students have chosen. And now we're looking at Northside alumni, not just in that profession, but hopefully Northside alumni, because we have twenty-six classes to choose from, and try to pick students that graduated from Northside that are in those particular careers so they can come on a career day and speak to the students. And they can circulate around first, second, and third choice. That's the plan anyway. I hope it works out.
Any other questions, Mr. Clark?
Is this concept of moving up with the classes, is that, is that new? Something that's been going on and I haven't?
It's probably not new everywhere, but it's new with us.
But you, and you instigated?
No, I didn't instigate. No, this was a grad project idea.
All right, I get you.
I give credit where credit's due.
Years ago. I'm not always up on everything, so.
So when you, great point.
Just saying thank you.
Oh, yeah. So when we talk about technology and our shortages, as far as that goes for your online APs, how far off are we with this stuff done?
Well, to be able to provide, I got thirty-five students taking ECU classes second period, thirty-three students taking ECU classes second period, I mean, third period. So I needed at least an additional ten laptops to make those two classes work.
Make it work the right way.
And I'm getting four from the IRS grant from some, I won't say leftover money, but from some surplus money that they had.
Right.
So I'm getting four laptops from them. So I really need six to, to just be able to meet the minimum needs. And that's with no technology issues with a particular computer.
So it really limits what you can do.
Yeah.
So what happens to those that are, you just, they just can't sign up for them because you don't have enough?
Pretty much.
How do you choose who gets it and who doesn't?
Good question. Haven't got to that point yet, because I'm hoping to get the computers. I think I'm going to get them. I talked to technology and I think I'm gonna get them. So now I just got to find a room big enough to hold thirty-five students. With electrical and technology, wiring, internet capability and all that.
Not just a room, it's a room that works.
You, do you have, have, do you have some computer labs or?
Yeah.
But they're busy with students?
Right.
It's a good problem to have.
Oh, yeah. And there's only, there's only a certain level laptop that will run the ECU software.
Right.
So if, if, you know, it'd be nice to be able to just pick up any laptop and say, here you go. But if it's not at least that minimum level, it won't handle the software that ECU runs. But it is, like you said, a great problem to have. And, and I really think this is addressing a lot of issues, the, the achievement gap, because now we're providing opportunities for all students to take college classes. And, and to see the classes, it's not, you know, just one socioeconomic status or one ethnic group, it's all groups in the classroom. And it's, it's been really beneficial for our students. And I, I'm gonna be sad to see it end if we're not able to continue to provide it.
I hope you can.
Beneficial for your students and your parents.
And the parents, exactly. Because it's putting, it's keeping money in the pockets of the parents.
Every credit, every credit hour you get.
Yep. I mean, just take, three hundred and nineteen classes, just the junior class, they, they've accumulated three hundred and nineteen classes at four hundred dollars a pop. You do that math.
Yeah, we need to find a way to make it work better.
Anyway, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Good luck.
No. Mr. Jackson?
You're really, you're really gonna have to step it up because the two before you have come in under time. Not to put any pressure on you.
You tell us what you want us to know to forget the time. You forget the time.
Well, we're gonna try and keep it short and sweet. Both County EdTech Center.
Is that technology shortage?
Both County EdTech Center has been a major tool in dropout prevention for the, for the past few years. And we gladly continue to accept that challenge as we move forward. This year, Both County EdTech Center has, to date, serviced seventy-one students. Currently, we have enrolled sixty-four students on our roster. Of that sixty-four, forty are male and twenty-four females enrolled in the Pathways Program. We have forty-three and twenty-one that have been appointed. Our staff consists of sixteen individuals. We have nine teachers, seven full-time staff, two part-time teachers, and one counselor, one social worker, and five classified staff, which are made of a credit recovery facilitator, two custodians, and two office personnel. We were asked to, to give our, our successes and our challenges. EdTech does things a little differently, so we're gonna give the challenges first, the bad and the challenges first, and then we'll, we'll end on a high note. In two thousand fifteen, we did not meet the ninety-five percent participation rate in state testing. We had ninety-two point four percent participation, which was an increase from two thousand fourteen's ninety percent. So we did send out the notification letters to the parents. EdTech has three major challenges. One of attendance, because our students are pathway students who have had some difficulties during the course of their high school career, or they have been appointed students. So some of them lack the motivation to make some successful in school. Parent communication and participation. We have, have been working with parents to work to improve that, because we have had some parents that have not had that, that trust in the, in the school system and we're working to rebuild that. And safety, because of the location of the school and because of increased activity in the, in the immediate community, we look at, we had to look at the different things that are, that are going on that, that we need to address. Especially the location of the school actually affords people to, that are within walking distance to just walk on campus. And so that's one of the things that we, we really want to look at. Not for anything bad, but just, actually just trying to cut through the, through the school to get to the other side of the street. So. Now, the good, EdTech has increased its graduation rate from thirty-six point eight in two thousand eight, two thousand nine to its all-time high of eighty-four point two. So we're very, very proud of that. And I didn't want to just come in and speak from my point of view, I wanted to, to get input from the staff. Staff basically has, has shared their thoughts. They're determined to get students to school on time and listen and learn, to participate as well as being successful at school. Giving our students the support and encouragement they may not get from home. We're providing an open door policy for students' parents to trust and to find in teachers, have a clear expectation for students' parents, and we give students a second chance. Got input from Bright, our Bright Futures Council, who is very active on the EdTech campus. The staff takes students from tough backgrounds and cares for them. The staff is passionate, the staff goes above and beyond, always looks for ways to encourage and motivate. School is different from the public perception and respectful atmosphere. And the Bright Futures Council are impressed with the staff's effort to improve the school overall. The key strategies that we are working on to make sure that we continue to improve the school is just, one, as we employ, we bring in new staff members. We actually have a panel of staff members that sit in on interview. And we, we try to hire those that really want to be there, that are really encouraging and really have desire to, to work with at-risk students. We utilize after-school makeup time to, for those students that miss a lot of days. We encourage them to go ahead and make that time up so they will get credit for their classes. We offer tutoring assistance during school day. Sometimes we have to, to work it in where the students go to the teachers during their planning period. So teachers are actually giving up planning periods to, to work with students to make sure that they're be getting what they need. Providing an environment that encourages students to be successful academically and socially. To improve test participation, we basically have a pep talk to the students before testing to, to let them know that it's important for them to put the best effort forward. We make phone calls prior to testing to remind parents that students need to, to be at school. Call parents if students absent on test days. We have a full-time testing coordinator on-site, so if students are absent, then they can, they can catch them when they come in. We utilize our community networks and connections and resources to provide opportunities that we may not have been able to provide for students. One example of that is tomorrow, we are gonna have our character carnival for students, students that have been doing what they need to do as far as coming to school, doing the, the work, and showing good character traits. They've collected character butts over the last month. And we are gonna have a, a big carnival for them where we have different, different stations set up for them to go and, and play. And one of the stations will actually be a basketball bungee, which is, is donated to us by one of our Bright Futures business partners. And this is something that, that we wouldn't have been able to afford at school, but because we did talk with our, with our Bright Futures Council and they, they are willing to help us out any way they need, they, they paid for that on one of their, the business's accounts. We utilize teachers more in the decision-making. At the beginning of this month, EdTech had a open house, which we've had, hadn't had since I've been there, and this is my fourth year there. We, we opened up for parents to come in. We didn't have a, a big turnout, but we do appreciate the, the parents coming in. And utilizing the automatic calling system to notify the parents. Actually, we're, we're doing things to try and just improve the overall image of the school. We're looking at re-imaging and re-imagining what, what EdTech is and what it can be. Guess I went over a little bit.
You did fine.
Don't worry about that. No, you're fine.
Yeah, all right, questions?
Well, I, I know attendance is always an issue with you.
Yes, sir.
And how, how, how are you doing? What do you, what do you think your attendance rate is? I, I looked through, I know you mentioned it several times. I see you're doing good things for, how's it working? How's it responding?
Well, attendance definitely is an issue. One thing that, that I have noticed is we, we keep count of how many students we have each day. And it's, you know, even though we, we show that we have sixty-four that are enrolled, it's, it's kinda, kinda tricky, because some of those are homebound students and some of those are students that are, are being provided services in a different way. So we, we tend to have at least three-quarters of our, our student population each day coming in. What we do is, is we have teachers that are constantly letting our social worker know what students have been out on a regular basis. And then the social workers take, touches base with their students. And another thing that, that I do is I actually call any students that have, have missed over eight days. I actually call and talk with the parents, because even though we do have the automated system, and that's, that's a good thing to have, it, it doesn't beat the, the personal touch to, to make sure that the parents know that, that we care about the students and we want to make sure that they're there. And in order for them to be successful, they have to be at school. Because that way, I can actually answer some questions that the parents may have that, that they may not be able to get from automated system.
I think it's always been a struggle.
Yes, sir.
Probably always will be, won't it?
Well, we're working on it.
But you, you are doing some good things.
Yes.
There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. And it takes a special person, and I appreciate it.
Well, we definitely enjoy them.
That's great. Anybody have any other questions, Mr. Jackson?
No, I really applaud Mr. Jackson for what he's doing over at EdTech.
I love the numbers going.
Graduation rate's outstanding.
That's great. And it'll, it'll, it'll get even better. I think the things you're trying to put in place are gonna have a, a strong effect.
Thank you very much, then. So I think that completes the presentations tonight for school improvement. I think I would entertain a motion for closed session.
I'll take a deep breath, Mr. Jackson.
A long one?
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four-three-dash-three-one-eight-dot-eleven-A-one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one-one-five-C-dash-three-twenty-one, and to consult with our attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board, which privilege is hereby acknowledged.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second, enter into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We're in closed session. Okay, you ready, sir? Okay, we're back out of closed session. And first item up is approval of the personnel agenda that was discussed earlier. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions about that? I don't think, we already know it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Also, we entertain a motion for an additional issue.
I'd make a motion that we become plaintiff in the, and I guess I want to say this in the?
In proper equipment case.
In the proper equipment case.
Second?
Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mike. Updates. I guess, Don, you wanna do a calendar update for us?
Well, November the thirtieth, which is a week from tonight, we'll have the other nine principals to do their school improvement plan presentations. You all recall, we had obviously three tonight, two at our previous meeting. That'll leave nine, and we'll go through that. And then you'll have the opportunity to approve school improvement plans. We also have gotten some feedback from DPI on the two low-performing school improvement plans that you saw the initial draft of at our last meeting. We're currently working on that. We're working on a survey for John Small. So this will continue to be an ongoing process as we get information in. But we have that scheduled for the thirtieth of November, beginning at four P.M. And then we have the Minority Hiring Practices Committee on December the third, here in the boardroom at five. And then our December board meeting, the time is four o'clock to start with the monthly meeting, and then our dinner immediately to follow.
So, yeah, make a noted times, a little bit of change on a couple of those. Anybody else have any calendar questions? Okay, if not, any board member updates?
I wanna thank the, I know Lisa was instrumental and Ms. Hodges and several others, Arch and Steve Griffin on the Ag Expo. It was a wonderful event, enjoyed by, you know, a lot of students and vendors. And I just wanna thank y'all for putting together such a great event over there at the, at the, at the Bob Martin Agricultural Center for Learning. But I thank you so much.
Anybody else have anything? If not, I want to say one thing toward Ms. Booth. Ms. Booth has been representing us at the state level for, has it been two years now or?
Four years.
Four years? Has that, has it been that long? For four years? And I'm, I'm, I'm sure I'm no different than the rest of the board members here, so I think this feeling is probably shared. We not send you up, but we, we, you go up. I'm, I'm not gonna say we send you up, but she goes up for us. And I just have been taking it for granted. And I just had an opportunity to spend three days with her at the North Carolina State School Board Association. And for those of you that weren't there, you would be amazed at how respected she is at the state level. And so, Ms. Booth, I, I appreciate it, and I will not take you for granted anymore, because it's just easy to do. It is, it's just easy to do. But, I mean, everybody up there knows Ms. Booth. And she participated in the program, making presentations.
And if they don't, they should.
And she represented us extremely well, much better than that grinning guy that you saw earlier that walked up there. So, thank you.
Yeah, but she enjoys it.
Well, I'm glad she does. But she's good at it.
That's right.
So thank you very much for making us look good.
And thank you. I thank the board for allowing me to have that chance to do that. It looks like that this, this coming up year will be my last year there. It looks like that this coming up year will be my last year there, and I'm gonna miss it, I really am. Good people, nice people to work with, friendly people, it's like being at home, you know. But I was told some little secret about where I might still be around, so we're just looking forward to see what happens. But I have enjoyed it, and thank you so much.
And you obviously have been doing some good work up there, because everybody knows you, so, I mean, it's not like she's just been sliding into town and out, so, thank you. Superintendent update?
I want to mention, as Carolyn mentioned, the Ag Expo last week, we're gonna have a debriefing tomorrow morning with the folks that are on the planning committee to already start work for next year, but for the board members that were able to go, we appreciate you being there. We had about 1,500 individuals, including exhibitors and vendors, and it was a great time spent. And although it was, we thought, wonderful, extraordinarily well-attended, and the participation was great, we feel like we can do even better, so we're gonna be working on that. Want to let the public know Thanksgiving, obviously, this week. We look forward to having time with our families and doing some things that are directed in that direction. We'll have a teacher work day on Wednesday, and then no school for holidays on Thursday and Friday, but we hope everyone will have a chance to enjoy family and relax a little bit.
Eat a little turkey. Or a whole lot of turkey.
A little and Thanksgiving don't go well together, usually.
A whole lot, okay. Anybody have anything else you'd like to say, share?
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Absolutely. More or less, thank the kids. Long weekend for them.
Good luck in the Southside, eh?
Yes. And keep all success.
They're getting deep into the playoffs, so the competition's gonna pick up a little bit, so. Okay, Ms. CC, would you like to share?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody says no, you hear by yourself.